Okay, we'll call this meeting to order January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five at nine oh two AM. Thank you all for coming this morning, and I'll lead us in our invocation before we do the pledges. If you'll pray with me. God, we love you, and we're so thankful for all the blessings that you provide for us each and every day, God. God, we're just, we ask for blessings over this courtroom. God, we just ask for blessings over this county. God, we just pray that, that you are just intertwine yourselves in, in all of our, our dealings, our thoughts, and our, our line of work, God. We just, and we're thankful for that, that you're there for us, God. God, we ask that you bless this county, this state, and this country. God, be with all the first responders out there as they work each and every day, serving the people. God, we just ask for your forgiveness when we fail you. We love you, and we can't live without you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Can y'all hear? Is it coming through out there just fine? Okay, just making sure. I get yelled at when people can't hear. All right, we're gonna open up number three, public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment today? And we'll limit those to three minutes. No way. All right, well, if anybody does want to, I'll gladly reopen it later on. Okay, thank you all for coming. Okay. Well, this one's a real quick one, and then item number four, discussion or... Yes, thank you. Number four, discussion or action regarding the appointment of a Burnet County Commissioner to serve as the Burnet County Representative on the Campo Board of Directors following the resignation of former Burnet County Judge James Oakley. And of course, this is a pretty important seat. Campo is pretty important to everything. We're glad to have a seat there, and I move to appoint Joe Don, Commissioner Joe Don Dockery to that board.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, sir. No, just in case anyone's not aware, Campo is a capillary metropolitan planning organization. It's your federal gas tax dollars that are coming back through the state and being real allocated.
All right.
I think it's worth mentioning that Commissioner Dockery has been involved with that heavily. Yeah, I've served on the Campo Board a couple of times previous.
Yep, he's the perfect choice. So with that, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for serving, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, discussion interaction regarding a presentation from Glenna Hodge, Chair of the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four Advisory Committee, and appointment of a new Justice of the Peace Precinct Four to fulfill the current unexpired term, which will be effective February the eighth of two thousand and twenty five. Commissioner Dockery.
I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hodge.
Good morning, everyone.
Ready to, ready to go, it looks like.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Glenna Hodge, Precinct Four resident of Burnet County, served as the Chair of this wonderful advisory committee and enjoyed every minute of it. I appreciate so much the appointment. The JP Four Replacement Advisory Committee received seven applications and resumes from interested Burnet County residents. After careful review, the committee met to discuss the mandatory qualification requirements and the pertinent professional experience of each applicant. The committee thanks all of the individuals that took the time to submit their applications. The committee was unanimous in its decision to recommend Judge Frank Riley for this appointment. Mr. Riley is a licensed attorney in the state of Texas, has practiced governmental law, that means constitutional, administrative, legislative ethics campaign, and election, business law, small business, real estate, and nonprofit estate planning law for over thirty years. He also provides legislative and governmental relations services, including drafting legislation and direct representation before local governments, the Texas Legislature, and state and federal agencies. Mr. Riley is an active member of the Burnet County community, serving on numerous boards and advisory committees. He served as Mayor of the City of Granite Shoals and currently serves as the city's municipal court judge. Serving in this capacity gives him the experience to be the most qualified candidate and enables him to step into the position of Justice of the Peace, ready to serve on day one. The committee thanks the Burnet County Commissioners Court for an opportunity to serve in the recommendation process. Thank you.
Zonk, can you give us a little overview of the process that you went through to get to the final candidate?
We started by addressing the statutory requirement, so we wanted to see, like, what, let's look at every candidate's resume, and let's look and see whether, whether they are a resident of the JP Four precinct. What, what is there, are there any issues with nepotism? Or are they of the required age? So we just went down the checklist of the statutory things first. And then we took some input from the JPs regarding their day-to-day operations. So for the civilians on the committee, there were two of us, Bill Ernest, I don't know if he's here, and I, needed, we thought, some education so that when we evaluated the applications and the resumes, we would have something to sort of base it on, a little bit more information to look at the qualifications of each candidate. So that was basically it. And then every person took the responsibility on their own to look at the, at the resumes and, and all of that. And Frank was just the clear winner. It was, he was just the person that stood out the most for what was needed at this time and into the future, I think.
Thank you.
Is that helpful? Thank you so much.
If you would, Ms. Hodge, could you refresh for the, for the public who was on that committee?
That was all four of the JPs, including the retiring Judge Ben Syle, and then Constable Ben Syle, and then Bill Ernest and me, so two civilians, and then the five elected officials on the advisory committee.
Was, was your decision unanimous?
It was, absolutely. Yeah, one hundred percent for Frank Riley.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, for sure.
I want to thank everyone that served on the committee. We do appreciate your involvement and, and your dedication to the county to make sure that we get the right person for the right job here. And with that, I would make a motion to approve Frank Riley as the appointment for the new Justice of the Peace for Precinct Four to fulfill the current unexpired term effective February eighth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you have anything you want to share? Do you have anything you would like to share?
I, I want to thank the court and, and the committee for their work. The committee, I know, took a, took a long view of everything, and I want to thank Judge Ben Syle for her years of service to the county in the various positions, including since, I think, two thousand and seventeen as the JP. So I've got large shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity in serving you and serving the committee and, I'm sorry, serving the county. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Need to report to HR? Okay, thank you. That was a good deal. And echoing his too, thank you to everybody involved in that as, as a volunteer and within your offices. Okay, and number six, discussion or action regarding a presentation from retiring Justice of the Peace Precinct Four, Debbie Benzal.
Good morning, Commissioners and employees and public. My name is Debra Benzal. I'm the current Justice of the Peace, getting ready to retire very quickly. It has been an honor to serve Burnet County for almost thirty years. I did have a split in my employment with Burnet County when I was employed by the City of Marble Falls as a clerk in the narcotics unit. I've held positions in the jail, county judge's office, district clerk's office, and the Justice of the Peace Number Four office. I was able to gain experience from the time a person is put into jail until they go to court. This was a valuable knowledge for me to obtain as it later became, as I later became Justice of the Peace. I thank God and Burnet County for allowing me to serve the citizens of this great county through the years. It has been a blessing to get to know all the employees and citizens I have been fortunate to interact with. I am looking forward to my retirement, but I know I will miss all of you. I know my replacement will do a fantastic job, and I, I am excited for him. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. May God bless each and every one of you.
Judge, thank you for your service.
Yes.
You've done an outstanding job. You make us all proud.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now that you've got time to get that honeydew list ready.
Okay, I do need to go back, I guess, and state that Commissioner Collier is at a scheduled training in College Station for newly elected officials, and we didn't want him to miss that opportunity, so that's where he's at, and getting trained. Okay, I've had a request to go to nineteen. Discussion or action regarding department updates. This one's for B, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up B first. A presentation from Michelle Moore, Chief Public Defender.
I just wanted to say hello. There's no presentation here. I just wanted to see y'all's hands and faces and just tell you, I can't wait to work with everybody. I'm excited about going back in as the Chief Public Defender. As y'all know, I started the office, so it's good to be back. I look forward to having y'all on my jury panels. So anyway, just wanted to say hello, let y'all know I was here, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for coming back.
Yeah, yeah, welcome back.
Okay, we'll stay on nineteen and go and go back to A, presentation from Burnet County Sheriff's Office regarding a calendar year, two thousand and twenty four, general report and overview.
Good morning. Just wanted to give a couple of updates on a few of the departments within the sheriff's office and demonstrate the type of work that we're doing in not only patrol or at the jail, but all, some of the specialized units that we have. And the first one I'll start with is the CIT Division, and it stands for Crisis Intervention Team. We had a total of five hundred and fifty-seven crisis intervention callouts or calls. And of that five hundred and fifty-seven, the sheriff's office alone, between the sheriff's office and Burnet County Jail, because we do get some, some, some mental, some crisis intervention, intervention calls from the jail for us to deal with, made up fifty-one point five percent of that total. So, and that includes all other agencies. That includes all the hospitals. That includes every other entity that, that deals with crisis intervention. The sheriff's office, again, had fifty-one point five percent of, made up fifty-one point five percent of those calls of the five hundred and fifty-seven total. And I want to break down a little bit on what the demographics of those are here in Burnet County. We've got in a, in the male bracket, ninety-two percent of the, the population in Burnet County, and you've got to also look at the democratic demographics of the county, but ninety-two percent, ninety-two point eight percent of those calls were white males. And so the other percentages made, made up just the, the, about seven point two percent of the remainder. Females, seventy-eight point four percent, or a hundred and ninety-six of those were white female. And then the other made up the, the balance of those percentages. Total, the males made up, total males made up fifty-five point three and forty-five percent, and forty-five, roughly forty-five percent of the females breaking those two, those two categories down. So there's not really a different, big, big difference between male or female in, in the county. The total number of, looking at the hours that we're getting called out, so these are calls that we are getting, and then we have to respond to. The calls that we are primarily going to would be between the hours of twelve noon and six PM. That's the biggest break, or the biggest block. That's thirty-six point six percent, or two hundred and four of those calls happened during that period. And if you extend it for an additional six hours for the, for the twelve noon to twelve midnight period, it makes up sixty-six point two, just in that twelve-hour period, meaning the, you know, after, afternoon. The lightest amount of calls, only the, the twelve percent is between twelve AM and six AM. Twelve AM and six AM, so the, the most calls are definitely between twelve noon and midnight. And then the, there's not a real big difference on day of the week as far as calls when they come in. But the first one, the, the one that has the highest percentage is on Wednesday at seventeen point two. And the one that has the fewest is, is Saturday at twelve percent. So this, just a five percent difference between the, the heaviest day and the lightest day on, so days of the week really don't make that, doesn't make that big of a difference. Now, when we're dealing with where are we diverting individuals to? Canyon Creek at eighteen, Georgetown Behavioral at forty-three, and the head, the highest one of the diversion is, is forty-six. We've also got Rock Springs at thirty-three. So those, those are where the, where we're taking our diversions, and that's where the, the highest number of those, of the two forty-four come into play. The, the notification of emergency detention, NED, and then you also look at, so there's breakdowns of all, of every facility and, and what their percentages are, and I won't go through that. And also, and, and most of these, and most of this information in a handout would be, it's not something that we would give to, to the court, just, these are just raw stats. Calls outside of the city limits was made up two hundred and eighty-nine percent, while calls outside of the city limits made up two hundred and sixty-eight percent of those calls. So there's very little difference between calls in cities, Burnet, Marble Falls, Bertram, all those cities that make up that, that number versus calls that are truly in the county, and, and we respond to all of them.
Do, do any of the cities have CIT?
So, yes, there are some cities that are trained in CIT. And, and we, as a sheriff's office, and, and I'm gonna break that down here in just a minute, we, as a sheriff's office, have volunteered to train for free any officer with any, with any other law enforcement agency within the county. We, and we've done that for, for the, the last two years that I've been here, and, and we get very little response. We, we, and, and a side note, one hundred percent of the Burnet County Sheriff's deputies are CIT trained. When, when we get a new deputy, they go through a, a significant amount of training to get to that point, but they also go through our FTO, FTO program that includes certifying them as a CIT officer. So one hundred percent of the, the Burnet County Sheriff's deputies are CIT trained. It's, and, and it shows. When you look at the numbers, we get calls from Marble Falls, from, from Burnet PD to go evaluate, and not, not our CIT guys, but our deputies to go evaluate, so that those guys know whether or not they're taking them to the jail or whether they're taking them to a facility, trying to get a facility for them. So it, it's a huge benefit that we have, that all of our deputies are CIT trained. And then, of course, then they have the ability to fall back on, on R two CIT assigned deputies that come, that are twenty-four, seven. They've got set schedules, but come out after hours and come out on weekends as well to, for any call within, within the county. Total man hours spent just in this, in, in calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four, was eight hundred and ninety hours spent. And that's, that's twenty-two and, twenty-two and a quarter weeks that, that the sheriff's office is spending just doing CIT work. Also, the other, the, what you, Judge, or Commissioner, you mentioned the, the training. Our CIT program, our awareness training program, we have trained two hundred and ten hours in, in calendar year, twenty-four. So, so roughly five point, five and a quarter weeks per year, our instructors, and our instructors are Captain Sorenson and, and our CIT deputies, as, as well as our training staff, have, have spent virtually every other month, we're putting on a forty-hour training. And that's for our people, that's for other agencies within the county, and that's also opening up. We, we train other county, many other agencies in the state that come to us for, for our CIT training. So we put a lot of people through the training, and we spend a lot of time purposely getting training in front of people that need to have it on the streets. I say all this to tell you that in, in calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four, the sheriff's office, through diversions, meaning instead of taking somebody to a jail, diverting them to a bed at a cost of eighty dollars a night, and, and on an average of thirty nights, and, and that's probably very minimal. Most stays in jail for somebody that is, is gonna be eventually moved into a, onto a bed outside of Burnet County is gonna be longer than thirty. We've had people that are waiting for beds for, actually, a, a year to get people into these beds. So we, we just took a minimal average of four, thirty days, thirty times your eighty is two thousand four hundred savings per diversion. We had sixty-four diversions in saving the county a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six, six hundred dollars in diversions alone. That alone covers the cost of a new deputy, and, and I'm, we're, we're lucky that we have the two. We've got one of them that's on a grant, and I'm, I'll, I'll come back when, when budget talks start again, and I'm, I'm leading with, we, we need another CIT deputy that's permanent, not one that's a grant that can go away from year to year. And so I will, I will certainly be addressing that as, as a significant need, and I think we're gonna have the ability to also prove that by just the diversions that we do, it will pay for the, those beds are then opened up. That's just the savings that it's, it's keeping, allowing the county, not to mention the beds that we then can sell to out-of-county inmates, which has been at, at an eighty-dollar-a-night fee, which has been a blessing in the last year and a half. Moving from CIT to dispatch, and unfortunately, I only, I'm only picking three categories today. But on dispatch, with the moving of the, of Burnet PD and EMS fire to the Marble Falls area, you would think that the calls would have, have significantly decreased for Burnet. However, they did not. Total, where they did decrease was obviously for Burnet PD, and because we will still get calls and we will forward those calls. But calls from Burnet PD went down from eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five to two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven, so they went down a total of nine hun, nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight calls. Burnet Fire and EMS in two thousand and twenty-three had four thousand, nine hundred and fifty, and in two thousand and twenty-four had, and, and I can make these numbers available to the, to the Commissioners sending to you. The EMS numbers went down to eight hundred and twenty, a five, a five hundred and four percent decrease, or a decrease of four thousand, one hundred and thirty. The, the significant number, though, is where we make up for that. Burnet, the Burnet Sheriff's Office Dispatch in, in two thousand and twenty-three received twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three calls, and in two thousand and twenty-four, forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty calls, an increase of sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventeen calls. So the grand totals, when you look at the grand totals for, and, and some of these other agencies went up and down, minimal twelve percent, three percent negative, fifteen percent negative, twelve percent positive. So there's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's really a net, no net gain or loss on it, very, one percent, actually. So in, in twenty-three, we had a total in county of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six calls. And in two thousand and twenty-four, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three, or a one percent decrease, and, and realistically, five hundred and seventy-three fewer calls in two thousand and twenty-four than, than dispatch took in two thousand and twenty-three. So the, the numbers and, and the moving of the dispatch did not have much of an impact, or an impact at all, other than where the calls are coming from. I do want to break down a little bit about where those calls are coming from. All calls received on nine-one-one, nine-one-one calls, ten-digit emergency numbers, nine-one-one admin cell, calls. In two thousand and twenty-three, nine-one-one calls, Burnet County had twenty-one thousand, seventy-five. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we had twenty-four thousand, ninety-eight, so a thirteen percent increase. And then one, one thing that we're not able to track this year because a new recording system came in was non-emergency phone calls that come into, during business hours, we also have the receptionist that works our front desk that takes, that takes the load off of, of non-emergency calls coming in, and then also diverting those calls because they may not be a true dispatch call, they may be an administrative call. And the new system that we have that helps track that, we didn't get until two thousand and twenty-three, so we can't track twenty-three as well as we were this year. Those numbers from two thousand and twenty-three were twenty-seven thousand, seventy-five, and in two thousand and twenty-four, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight. And, and seventy-six thousand were fire, burn call, I'm just kidding, burn calls, I was gonna say. We've got, we receive a lot of burn calls, and I'll break those down here in just a minute as well. Another key area that, that we pride ourselves on with the dispatch is calls answered in less than ten seconds. That's their goal, is to have a, when somebody's calling an emergency, that those calls get answered. We have a, we have a ninety-seven point nine percent rate of answering calls in less than ten seconds. And the lower number, the, the higher number we can get, we want, want to be at a hundred percent. We're, we're two, two point one percent off of that, that perfect one-hundred percent score. And then lastly, on dispatch, I just want to identify a couple of areas that are significant because of the growth of the county. Accident calls. In two thousand and twenty-three, we received seven hundred and seventy-eight accident calls. In two thousand and twenty-four, we received eleven hundred and eighty, so an increase of So an increase of 402, a 34% increase in accident calls. And 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 you've heard lately, they, you know, talk to the volunteers and talk to the fire departments, talk to EMS. They've been some significant ones on 29, specifically in Bertram, some significant issue on 71 with the passing in the no-passing lanes. And then also, we've had some, you know, some significant ones on 281 and Park Road 4. In general, calls are, obviously, calls are up. That's that's a a key. And and when we are responding to accident calls, we're not working traffic, we're not working, going to other calls. And so that that's a, that's, that takes us more off the road. Or, let's see. Agency assist emotionally disturbed persons. So this is kind of what the CIT I was talking about earlier. In in 2023, we had 65 agency assists, another agency calling us to come help them, 65. And in 2024, we had 113. So an increase of 42% or an additional 48 calls. So four calls a month that we that we now are responding to from other agencies asking for our assistance for for CIT. Kind of an odd one. Animal calls are up 29%. Assaults are up, it doesn't, it's not a big number, but '23, we had 56 assaults, and in '24, we had 70. So a a difference of of plus 14. But that plus 14 is 25% up from what we had last year. Controlled controlled burns calls, just by itself, we received 8,732 controlled burn calls in in the year 2024. And we do not have that number for 2023. We've been tracking it in 2024 and and didn't do that until this year. So I'm not, I don't have a number for you available for that. Disturbances, things that put your officers and and first responders in in danger, was a 65% increase on disturbance calls, from 137 to 226, an increase of 89, 89 disturbance Here's another category with emotionally disturbed persons, where our agency has called to them, an increase of 35%. See where the trend is going, certainly with with mental health and and how we need to, we need to get in front of it and address it. EMS combined calls. In 2023, we had 341. And in '24, we had 24, 2,455, an increase of 2,114. And that's just the difference, also, one of those same things, a difference on how we're tracking that number from '23 to '24. Fire calls, because of those drone, those those burn bans, we've had, in in '23, we had 219 fire calls. And in 2024, we had 555 fire calls, an increase of 336 or 153% of an increase in in fire calls. And and I'll I'll highlight another program that I'll bring up, bring out at a later date, the drone program that we've introduced. The fire departments love it. We are able to help them with, put, put drones in the air for the first time. And the recent fire we just had last week, we put two drones in the air at the same time. We had been having to to land them, to recharge them and get the battery, get a fresh battery in and put it back up. With our recent purchase last year, we were able to now send a drone up, and it alerts whenever the battery is low, and it will let our pilots know that that it needs to come back to the docking station. And as soon as that happens, we can put the second drone up and never lose a minute of feed. We just had a, we just had a, an arrest made this, on Monday of this week, yesterday of this week, early yesterday morning, where the response from the from the captain in our CIT division said, the drones are have are a total change in how we can plan on doing raids and how we can plan on on felony arrests and and arrests with warrants, that we can put a drone in the air two hours before the the event is going to take place, and we're able to to get live feed to the briefing room to show everybody in the room where where, what what the attack point is and where we need, where we plan on entering, where we plan on parking, where we plan on staging. It is just totally invaluable and has changed the game on how we are able to successfully plan raids. And and it's, it's been, I thank y'all for for definitely taking the ride with us, if you will, on on as we have increased our drone presence in in Burnett County. An interesting that we're not, to show the, how busy our guys are, interesting thing that we're not doing is we're not providing as many motorist assists. In other words, when somebody's broken down out on a road, we're having to pass them by because we're we're flying to a assault call or we're flying to emotionally disturbed person. And so we're, we went down from 437 to 389, so a decrease in 89. It's not significant, but that's 89 people that were in Burnett County that didn't get help from us from the previous year that we typically would have time to be able to stop. But we, our guys are definitely going from call to call and and are busy. Some other good negatives, sexual assault on childs are down, shots fired are down, 53% shots fired. Stolen vehicles are down. So there's work being done that's helping decrease these significant numbers that that are negative numbers that we want to see. And I'll leave that, well, I'm going to give you one more. Reckless drivers, we get called, that's one of our big calls that we get into into the dispatch center. In 90, 2023, we had 943. 2024, we had 1,585, an increase of 68% of of calls into dispatch center, or 642 additional calls, just people calling in about reckless driving. The last thing I'm touching on will be impound. We've got some impound numbers for how, impound stats on on livestock. In 2024, we impounded 30 livestock animals, the highest ever in the last five years. Total income from sales was 13,219. Invoice from the cowboys and storage fees was 11,076. Total commission fees from auction was 520, and total to the county clerk's office was 574, where that would leave a balance of a plus 1,048 for livestock impounds in 2024. another area I'm going to hit, the last one I'm going to hit is records, open records. And we we just had a great training regarding open records from the Attorney General's office last week. Open records, and one of the positions that I'm, I'll again ask for for this this next fiscal year is, we have an open records clerk, we do not have an evidence person, and and we're desperately need, the same person is doing two jobs, and we desperately need that evidence person to 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 be able to to focus on evidence. In the la, I'm going to give you three years. 2022, we had 914 open records requests, and this is just sheriff's office alone. 2023, we had 987, so an increase. And then from '23 to '24, 960, so a minute, a decrease of two, of 27. But just on average, we're spending 18.46 weeks per hour of our week, the the person that is assigned to that is spending just on records half of her time doing nothing but records. And that's, that that is, that's putting us in a bad position on the evidence side of it. And and as as all the other departments are aware, how many open records requests have increased with the auditor's office, the county attorney's office, and on all the different offices, anyway? So just putting that in front of you on on open, particularly open records and CIT on on the future of of where we kind of need to be going with with potential increases on on staffing. Any questions?
So you've got, you've had a commercial vehicle officer, now you've got two, I think.
We do, yes, sir.
So it'd be interesting to know some of those statistics. So most people see the 18-wheelers and whatnot coming to town, and you know, where we're at on that.
Sure, and and I can give you a brief, and I definitely intend to do that on the next time that I will address, that will have a few more other departments. But one of them would be the the increase of the CVE officer. One, it got budgeted starting October 1. And so while we had to go through the process of making sure we had a candidate or candidates trained, because it's, it's about a year's worth of training in order to get somebody available, ready to write a ticket for commercial vehicle laws, federal laws. And so we're, we were kind of a little bit, we were fortunate that we knew somebody that was very interested and had been putting themselves through the school already. And so they have passed all the exams. And so at the beginning of the fiscal year, we were able to shortly thereafter identify that individual and and have interested individuals put in for it. He was the one that we, that was successful in getting the position and has been very gung-ho and 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 wanting to to get out there and help. Of course, with that position, y'all know our situation with vehicles. And so we we had to, with that position, get a vehicle and the equipment that goes with it, the scales, the scales, $22,000, $21,000, just for the scales alone that that vehicle has to have. Also, we had to get a truck. We we preferred to get a truck, and the reason being is the the weight that that they're going to have and the ability to put those scales in and out, it's not as easy to put those, to handle those in a Tahoe. And you you learn from from what other agencies are doing, and a lot of the other agencies are that are doing, are using pickup trucks to do it. And so getting the vehicle, one, we had to get the vehicle ordered, and I believe we just ordered, or we've got that ordered, yes, there, the truck itself is a, they gave us a 60 to 90-day period on which we would get it delivered, which then, because we've got it ordered, we're now able to put that vehicle in line to get upfitted, because that's another wait, because we have to get on the schedule. So now that we've got the vehicle ordered, we can get, we're on the schedule to get it upfitted. And so as soon as it comes in within that 60 to 90 days, we can get that to the upfitter. And then we've got another month-long wait before we can get the vehicle. So that's the big delay. They've got one vehicle that they're having to work out of. They do have, they do have a second vehicle, but it it doesn't have any of the equipment that that they're going to need. And there's also a a huge delay with software, software that allows him to write tickets, that allows him to connect to particular servers that they need, that that Tally's able to to do with his computer that he's not able to. And and it's a, it's a, it's a Burnett County IT DPS IT issue that we're that we're working on resolving. And fortunately, with some connections with DPS, able to hopefully get those those resolved sooner than later so that we have two functional laptops that the the CVE can use. Maybe more information that you know, that you asked for, but that's, that's kind of where we are. He's, he's ready to work, and they are working, but he's having to only call out vehicles for 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 our other CVE to make the stops. And so then he helps them with the stops, but they are working separate, but they're having to, he's having to call those, call those out. So that's kind of where we are now.
That's good to know. We're waiting on the vendor.
Any other? Thank you.
If there's any other requests, let me know. If not, we'll start back back in order on the agenda. Item number seven, discussion or action regarding District Attorney SB 22 changes to payroll. Welcome. How's it going?
Great, thank you, thank you. Well, good morning, I'm Perry Thomas. I'm your District Attorney for the 33rd, 424th Judicial District, and thank you for having me this morning. I come to the court this morning to discuss some monies that have been granted to the District Attorney's Office under SB 22, specifically $8,442 that have been granted to the office. But those funds have not been designated to any particular category at this time. And so my request this morning is to ask the court to approve the spending of that $8,442 that's already been granted to two positions within the District Attorney's Office. One position would be granted $3,803.60. The other position, $4,638.40. And so this is not additional county money we're asking for, it's already been granted to us under SB 22. But I need the court's permission in order to to spend that money, and that's what I'm asking to do.
Okay.
Have you met with our auditor's office?
I have, yes.
And HR as well? I don't know if we have, is HR around?
We've met yesterday, we met yesterday on it, in fact.
You should have a sheet in front of you also that shows the allocation.
Any issues or concerns? It is grant money that he gets to spend, so.
I would move for approval. I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, discussion or action regarding approval of precinct four constable to provide security at the Highland Lake Service League Chuck Wagon Chowdown on January 25, 2025. The constable is donating her time and would like to use the constable vehicle. Constable, she was here. This is an annual event that you donate your time for. And you wanted to put this on here just to? You better, yep. Go with Mike.
Good morning, I'm Missy Benz, I'm the Burnett County Precinct Four Constable. Sorry, my allergies are killing me. And this is something I do every year. And so I do wear the uniform that the county pays for, and I do use my patrol car, but I donate my time as security. So I just want to get it on the agenda.
Okay.
I move for approval. Second.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for volunteering for that organization. Number nine, discussion or action regarding the approval of a general and no litigation certification in connection with a multifamily housing bond issued by the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. This was on the last agenda for the certification, and then this is just the bonds following those up. Is that correct? Okay. And they are right here. So I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. I'll take this opportunity to give Stephanie McCormick a shout-out. She has created binders for us with the agenda and tabs for every agenda item that's available for us after the agenda releases. So a lot of good work on her part, keeping us organized. So thank you, Steph, for that. Okay, number 10, discussion or action regarding the release of maintenance bond number 4455403 for Ridge Point Estates, Phase 1 and 2. Mr. Darling, you have to go to a microphone, sir. Please. It's my request. At least stand by the podium. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Herr Darling, Burnett County Development Services.
Yes, sir. All right.
Commissioner, we've reviewed the improvements there, the bond, it's a good exploration date, that's my recommendation to the court that you release the bond.
Yes, sir, I concur. These roads are built fine, they're ready to be released to the property owners. So I move to release the maintenance bond of Ridge Point Estates.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Both. Thank you. Number 11, discussion or action regarding the release of maintenance bond number 4406108 for Whispering Wind subdivision.
Same song, different subdivision.
Yes, sir. They were built about the same time, both hot-mix roads, and
They've bailed up oil.
They have. I move for release.
Second.
Any more discussion or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Number 12, discussion and our action regarding requests for a variance from the Burnet County subdivision regulations by Romigio Roman Hernandez to create a five-acre tract and a 5.01-acre tract out of a 10.01-acre tract known as BCAD parcel number 125305.
Commissioners, we have forever granted variances, and most times they are warranted. However, in light of the recent groundwater availability studies that were done in this area, I think it's time to advise the court to be prudent in a variance situation, and it's my recommendation not to approve this, as the 10.01-acre tract was created by an exemption under law, and there are several other, there's quite a few ten-acre tracts in that area. When you look at the CAD map, it appears to be a subdivision in the general vicinity of that area. Further division of this property without adequate groundwater studies and assertions that we have adequate groundwater, I think is not being very prudent for the potential purchasers of this property.
Okay.
Are there two existing wells on here?
No, sir.
Okay. They just already marked, they're handwritten in on the plaque as well and well, I just didn't know if they were there or not.
I'm not aware of any wells.
And it also creates a flat lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your input, Herb. Any? Any motions? Hearing none. We'll move on. Number 13, discussion or action regarding a replat of 142A Windermere Oaks Devonshire section? Did I say that right?
Devonshire.
Devonshire, tried too hard. And it called 0.106-acre tract out of 145A Windermere Oaks Devonshire section to be known as 142B Windermere Oaks Devonshire section.
Commissioners, this is a cleanup of no Meeks &amp; Bowns sale, and it just incorporates this section that was sold by Meeks &amp; Bowns to the neighboring property owner into the lot it was sold into. Does that really confuse you?
Just a cleanup?
It's a cleanup.
Okay.
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion second, any further discussions or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 14, discussion or action regarding the replat of lots 23 and 24 Shady Acres to be known as Lot 23A Shady Acres, a combination of two lots into one. Commissioner Luther.
This is two lots into one. We lack those, so I'd move for approval.
Second.
Scratch that out.
Got a scribbler's error.
Scripters there here. Go ahead and scratch that out.
It's got the wrong commissioner.
Wrong commissioner.
We can fix that.
I'd move for approval. We've got a motion and second on the table, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I got distracted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Two into one's good. It was unanimous.
I was a late aye.
He, you want me to redo it? He was a really late aye.
Commissioner Luther was a motion, I seconded it.
All right, number 15, discussion or action regarding budget interdepartmental line item transfers.
It's all 24.
Oh, yes, okay. So these are line item transfers to clean up 2024 as the auditor does her closeout, and these are all listed.
Number 15 are for FY '25.
I apologize.
Maybe I picked the wrong tab.
Yeah, sorry. Bear with us. These are for 2025. These are, Karen, if you want to speak to these, are most ARPA transfers, it looks like.
There's, they're mainly ARPA, because ARPA ends 1231, 2024, or 20, yeah, 24, and there's some 25s that are just among departments, among interdepartment line items.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I would move for approval.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Number 16, discussion, discussion interaction for the authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor. These are just bills and payroll?
Just bills this, this week, claims in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine-thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, and a prepaid of forty dollars.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, 17, discussion and our action regarding FY '24 end-of-the-year budget amendments. This, yes, sir, same. So again, I'll reiterate, this is a cleanup of balancing out FY '24. Some ARPA stuff created different things, most of them are very minor, the list is available if anybody wants it after court. This is recommendations from the auditor. Do you have anything else?
No, I just might mention that FY '24, the departments did a very good job, and most all of the departments were within budget.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, 18, discussion or action regarding departmental asset transfers. We have a few.
Couple of vans, Vet Rides going to Gov. Deals.
This top sheet, did you see that? Where the tab is? There's a list of small stuff from the jail.
Okay, from the jail to Gov. Deals as well.
Yeah, the jail's selling a bunch of old equipment on Gov. Deals. Vet Ride's selling two vans on Gov. Deals.
I'd move for approval.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 18, all right, so 19, we've already covered. 20, acknowledgment of receipt, the MIS summary, which is the Trapper's Report. B, Marble Falls Area EMS Update, and C, Building and Septic Report for December and our year-end total. No actions required for those, but we have received those reports. Number 21, discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved and or ratified. A is an approval to accept the quotes from Net Solutions for the Panic Button System to be purchased 100% through a grant from the FY '25 Criminal Justice Grant Program from the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Criminal Justice Division. B is an independent contractor agreement for Vet Rides. And C is an approval to use the E-Rate discount for the Burnet County Library Internet Service.
I have a question on.
Yes, ma'am.
About Taddy Kofe, Burnet County, Interested Person. You have some security item on here, I don't have a copy, is it A or B?
The Panic Button?
Yes.
A.
Is that a two-stage process? A two-phase process?
I'm gonna let, Jana Teague is our grants coordinator. I'll let her speak to the details.
Jana and Amy worked very hard on this, and I guess my only question is, is it all being done at once, or is it being done in phases? Jana Teague, Burnet County, Grant Manager. Originally, our application was for four, four metal detectors and seventeen panic buttons, and the metal detectors, we found out by chance that we could actually use a state contract, which decreased the amount of cost for the metal detectors, so we were able to increase the amount for the panic buttons. I don't know the exact numbers, but it's more than seventeen. We also have looked at other buildings. This, as is noted, is only for the main courthouse, both the north and south annex, and the old jail, the museum at the old jail, and I believe that's it.
JP 1.
Oh, yeah, JP 1, because it's across the street. We are interested in getting quotes for additional ones, for an additional grant that will be, the application is due in February, and we can talk more about that next week. We just needed to kind of set that up, so that's where that is. So basically, Phase One and Phase Two included additional ones in each of those buildings, and then, except for the old jail, which was not on Phase One. And hopefully, we can get the second grant and be able to give, we're looking at the public defender's office, we're looking at the south, the annex on the square, and also at the AgriLife building, so that's what we'll be looking for. While we are talking with him, we also are going to be looking at possible card key entrances. Mainly, it's just the safety of everyone, and so that's another step that we may be including on the next grant as well.
So this set right here is, when we approve this, they'll come in and do this?
Yes, the two phases.
Or in two phases.
The Phase One and Phase Two will be done at the same time.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay.
And Jana, additional panic buttons can be purchased for?
Ninety-five dollars, I believe. I think there was a couple that were missed in this building for sure, and because of the cost, there is a small yearly fee. It's like two hundred and fifty dollars a month per building is all, or I'm sorry, sorry, two hundred and fifty dollars per year per building. And so that is an additional cost that will have to be covered by the budget at later times, and we'll include that when we do the budget process.
Okay. Okay, you good?
Thank you.
I will, it kind of fits in, you'll start seeing more and more courthouse security items on the agendas as we move forward and as we can afford them, and starting to get more in line with recommendations that came in. So stay tuned for those. Okay?
I'd move for approval of item 21.
A, B, and C? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any further discussions or any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 22, discussion or action concerning calling for bids and bid openings, requests for proposals, qualifications, and related openings. A, going out, approval to go out for bid on the following, tree trimming and black base. Do we want, is there anything to add to that, when you go out for?
I'm sorry, could you just explain what black base is?
Sure.
Thank you.
My, my best run at it is black base, you have road base, which has no oil in it, and you have asphalt, which is, has oil in it, black base is kind of in the middle. It's, it's base with oil in it to help, it's a stronger, we use it quite a bit for digouts and failure repairs. Is that good?
Shoulder work.
Shoulder work, things like that. Okay. Any comments, questions, or motions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, calendar review. Let's see. We talked about the Chuck Wagon Chowdown coming up on the 25th. That's Highland Lake Service League fundraiser. Our next scheduled Commissioners' Court is January the 28th. Some other nonprofits, Casa Boots and BBQ at Horseshoe Bay on February the 1st, Burnet C ISD Education Foundation Gala on February the 8th. Ocala Library is having a Dutch Oven Cook Off, it's an annual event for them on the 8th as well. And then, Purse Bingo for the Advocacy Center is on February 22nd. Anything else sticking out?
Commissioner, don't you have a public forum on candidates?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we, according to, will close applications on January 31st at noon, will then post a list of those applicants. The goal is by 5:00, I was, I was told we can make that happen, and so that day, that'll be out there, and then the public will have time to communicate with us, just like they have since we opened it, for our first forum on February the 6th for all applicants at 6:00 o'clock at our AgriLife building located here in Burnet on Vandevere Street. And then another, then we will have our Commissioners' Court, regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court on February the 11th, where we will vet through the applicants and narrow it down to two applicants. Then we are going to immedi, well, two days later, we'll have a second public forum for public input and at 6:00 o'clock at AgriLife for those two. And then, public input never, never increases or decreases, it's a solid flow anytime you want to give us public input, I want to keep saying that. We've been getting some, and we, we welcome that, and any questions that you might have specifically for these forums, get those to us. Our email addresses are everywhere, and we appreciate those via email, and a single email per commissioner because of forum rules, so. And then on February 25th, our regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court, it will be on the agenda to make an appointment. And I would like to clarify, a lot of people say interim county judge, I've been told interim is not the case, this is the next county judge. Interim, not to take away or add anything, but it's just not an interim, it is the county judge for the next two years.
Claire Nibro, Burnet County Voter, Taxpayer, Interested Person, just have a question about the voting process that you all will be doing, will that be done in the public arena, in the public forum during the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It'll be basically job interviews here in court for you all to witness, and I would say, at the next court, I got to work with the county attorney and on the agenda item of, to detail out kind of the, how the forums are going to operate, so that way we can all agree on how they're going to operate exactly, and, you know, how that's going to work, so.
I'm sorry, another question, who will be the moderator at the forum?
That was what I was getting to.
Okay.
I think in the next court, I'm going to put an agenda item on so that we can discuss that and now, and hammer down the specifics of those forum, forums. The intent of the forums was public input, we checked that box, we want that, so now I think on the 28th, our next meeting, whenever that, it's not the 28th.
Yeah, it is.
It's the 28th, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, another question, just popped into my mind, are citizens? Are citizens, is there any amount of, a limit to the emails that citizens may solicit to their commissioners on this process, or they?
As long as they have legitimate questions or something that we can pose to the applicants, that's fine. I mean.
I think, and we'll nail this down, and we can probably get into more details on the 28th. I don't want to venture off too far here, because that's why I wanted to do that, to hammer down these details.
Okay.
So that the applicants are aware of exactly how it's going to roll.
Okay.
Because you can, in my mind, I kind of saw the forums and then our agenda item in here when we have our, like, the in-court interview, those are probably going to be two different, you know, we need to talk through those.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, yeah, but all the emails are welcome, and then, yes, so on the 28th, I think, again, we're going to hammer down how those forums are going to run, so there's no surprises.
So are you going to post that as a workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll both be posted as where we can all attend, and then, in my opinion, and we'll nail this down on the 28th, but going back, as you guys send questions or input, we're going to use those to formulate the questions that we ask and the information that we gather based on that, because again, we could get a lot of the same questions, and so we're going to, you know, weed through those and make sure, but then, of course, the questions that we got will be made available if you want to go through to ensure that we did, in fact, have to do what our, we do what the citizens wanted. Does that make sense? So we'll have another agenda item on the 28th to narrow down the, how the forums are going to operate. I think that'll be crucial to making sure everybody's on the same page. Okay? We went a little bit over on calendar review there. Hopefully, I stayed within bounds, they didn't yell at me, so I will say that I did. And before we adjourn, I just want to, one more time, and I think I speak for everybody here, thank you, Judge Benzow. You, great career, and we wish you all the best, and of course, you've got all of our phone numbers. Call us if you need us.
Thank you.
Okay? There's no further business. I am going to adjourn this meeting at 10:11.